To order council regular session, November first. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll open it up for visitor comments. Is there any visitor comments out there? Like to welcome me a Steve to council regular session. If you want to see what really happens, come to the work session at one o'clock. That's where we talk about a lot of this stuff. Yes, it just got over as matter of fact, about five twenty. It went quite a while. Okay, ordinance first reading ordinance number three, two, two, one, and ordinance vacating a portion of North Tenth Street right away. Okay, appointments to city boards and commissions. What do we got?
Looks like Lisa Brooke for Arts and Cultural.
Is this whole list we gotta do, or some of these are not decided? Because I know.
That they selected people?
They did select someone, but when I went back and looked at all the resumes, I couldn't get, I thought that was the name when I, I mean, the applications.
Mm-hmm.
I couldn't get one to match up.
Oh.
Where?
But.
Was all these?
We haven't interviewed yet.
Right.
Is that the name?
Well, I told you, I thought that was the name.
Yeah.
And through all the, all the applications that have been forwarded to us in emails and. Do you have a look at the applications that came in?
Yeah.
I know there's, there's one for bike commission and bike commission has not a meeting, so they haven't given a recommendation yet, I know, so.
Because I thought that's who decided on it and I went back to it and looked at the applications and I couldn't find one for somebody with the last name Brooke.
Margaret, can you turn on your mic? Right.
I may have missed getting a, a, an application that came through.
Yeah, I see a Lisa Brooke, Janet Anderson, Lori Adsit, April Burbank, Kelly Christensen Akagi, Jen Farrington. They were the most recent ones and Jen's already on, right?
Yeah. And so is Janet Anderson.
Okay.
And Latisha's on. Okay. Then, yes. You have an application from a Lisa.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I just couldn't find it in all my emails. So, that's legit then.
Did anyone read over it? Is there?
They were interviewed.
Okay.
This was the recommendation by the committee, but I was not at the last meeting.
I get it. Okay. So who did they recommend, right, Margaret? Lisa Brooke? So I would move that Lisa Brooke be, uh, to find it to the Arts and Cultural Commission.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to appoint Lisa Brooke to Arts and Cultural Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, consent agenda for acceptance. A, Arts and Cultural Commission minutes date August twenty ninth, two thousand seventeen.
Move we approve consent agenda for acceptance.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda seven for approval. A, council work session, public caring and regular session minutes dated September sixth and twentieth, two thousand seventeen. B, accounts payable bill list.
Move we.
Move we approve consent agenda seven, A and B.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve A and B. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Um, I don't have too much to report other than, uh, um, my, I guess, you know, Halloween Town was a huge success. That's what I heard from the overall, even though there was a little bit of wavery of, of, of different people wanting certain things a certain way. But the overall view of Halloween Town was highly, highly successful. I, the businesses all thrived. I mean, even uptown, I, I was up there floating around and a lot of people. It was a big month.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, it was, uh, interesting to see how much goes behind that and I probably didn't see it all because I wasn't completely enthralled in it. But, uh, I know it has come a long ways and next year is twenty years and, and I would have to agree with everybody here that, uh, to start, start sooner than later as far as planning twenty years, big deal.
With clarity.
With clarity, yes. Absolutely. Other than that, I don't think there's really too much in the city that I've heard of any complaints or anything like that. So, um, just a lot of good, good reviews over Halloween Town. So, all right, let's go with, uh, Councilor Locke.
Uh, well, I, I agree on Halloween Town that it's getting bigger and bigger and, um, I think we need to maybe put it on, spend a little time at our retreat talking about it as to what the next step should be. Whether, how far we want to go with it and how big we want it to be because, uh, the, the issues that I've seen are that kinda it's, it's, it's fine, but it's not, it's not great. And, uh, we've had a lot of people come here from all over the country and, like I say, it's just kind of okay, but I don't know whether they're, if they're impressed enough to really come back year after year and whatnot. Where I think we can take it to that level if we want to, uh, to where it is a big thing and they do want to come back year after year and after year. So, I think that's a decision, something we need to talk about as to how to get to there.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Other than that, I know Terry's on vacation this week, so, uh, and he sent out a email to you guys a week or so ago about recruitment for the police department. And, uh, just wanted to, uh, I think we need to talk about this a little bit at the retreat also, but you can start thinking about. I know when we were in negotiations, we talked a lot about with Aiken Blitz, our, our lawyer, on to what can we do to, uh, not only get policemen here, but keep them here also, once we have them here. Because historically, we've, uh, I mean, luckily, we have a, a, a great department and they really go through the process of, you know, running the applicants through the wringer and they only accept the, the best of the best and that's great. But on the other hand, we still go through and, uh, they stay here for a few years and we spend a lot of time and money, especially the first year, getting them just where they're an officer. And then a few years down the road, we'd lose them to Portland because of, they have a chance of moving up more or whatever the case would be. So, um, I'll just throw this out. One of the things that we, we really talked about that is, is kind of way out and above anybody else's sort of, you know, and like you can offer them, you know, money for this or spending years or whatever, but one of the things we talked about was how important it is that they live in the city. I think right now we're kind of split. I think there's like a third live in the city, a third in the surrounding area and then about a third in the Portland area. So, it's kind of split that way and it's kind of historical the way it's been. But we were thinking, how can we get them to live here and be part of the community and whatnot because it's very, we, we felt it was important. And, uh, one of those things was, you know, is there a way we can, you know, maybe tie that to, to their, to their homes or something? By, um, maybe financing the home. So their finances with us and, you know, that, that's a pretty big incentive. If you, if somebody's financing your home for you in a town, not only the, the savings of money, but, but now you're, now you actually are tied to a town and whatnot. So, it'd make you think kind of twice about moving somewhere possibly. So tho- those are ideas that we're looking at, you know, so think about that between now and the retreat and we'll, we'll throw everything in the basket and see what we can come up with. So, that's all I have for now.
So I've been putting together a draft, uh, agenda for the, the council retreat. That, that issue is on the agenda already.
Okay.
Nice.
Okay. I'll, I'll start counting that before we.
Before we go. All right. Uh, Councilor Carlson.
I just, uh, follow up, the kids did the dance and they brought in, um, we haven't finished the money piece yet, but they turned in just under fifty pounds of food to the food bank. Last year, the kids helped me do the elf on a shelf for the businesses and there was some concern about elf on a shelf and the trademark and the book and that kind of thing. And so, just throwing it out there, thinking about doing a snowman this year and just kind of switching it up a little bit and do something completely different. But the local businesses, just in putting the idea out there, I got four business, four emails overnight that people are interested in doing it again. So it's at almost no cost and local businesses appreciate it. The kids like doing it. And it's a good small town, main street kind of thing to support our small cottage businesses. The other thing they have, I will, is, um, I don't know if everybody knows, but I, um, Harvey Bilton and his wife Vicky that were here for the,
Yep.
Um, they cleaned out all the flower beds in front of the library and bark dusted.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
On their own with their children. And that's what they did on the weekend. I went by and saw them doing it, so I knew that they did it. Nobody told me to say thank you. But I, when you see citizens doing good things, you want to celebrate that, those efforts. And then our youth counselor David is here to do a report for, just to give an update or meet the council. He, we've asked him at our, their meeting if they could, one of them could pop by and since our meeting went late, I didn't go home and get Kaylee, but David's here.
Nice.
So when it's time, that if David could say a couple words.
Sure. Thank you, Jenny.
That's all I got.
Councilor Khan.
Um, yeah, Rick and I were at trunk and treat last night at the police department. We'd like the youth council to participate next time too, maybe, or think about it anyway. Like, both the library board and arts and cultural were among the volunteer organizations that were present and there was an incredible turnout. There were kids forever. It was very successful. Speaking again of the police department, there are interviews lined up in a couple of weeks too, so we have some more candidates that we'll be looking at. Next council meeting, hopefully we'll be able to give awards for the winners of the scarecrow contest. And, yeah. Vicky and the kids and Harvey did an incredible job. They did a great job and it was all their own labor. They volunteered. And yes, very grateful.
Yes.
They had asked what they could do. And I had been thinking about what you were saying about landscaping recently and it makes a huge difference.
It does. A little bit of bark dust, oh my gosh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
They, they've also volunteered their facility for the teen dance the last three years also.
Wow. They really do a lot, don't they?
They step up.
Very community spirited.
And over and over again, they step up and donate to the.
Um, could you make a note that we, uh, um.
Send thank you.
Yeah, send a thank you to them and I would like to assign it to, on behalf of the city council.
And that's all I have.
All right. Councilor President Morton.
The retreat sounds like it's going to be exciting. I mean, we've got a, a, a full agenda, don't we?
Yes, we do.
I mean, there's just more and more. The kind of keeps coming up, whatever. It's really, I, I really want to acknowledge Dave for being here and acknowledge, uh, Keith and Jenny for, uh, encouraging, uh, one to step forward and give a report, uh, give reactions to possibly, uh, improvement in the city, looking at the mission and figuring out what could be better with that mission. I, I really, I really encourage, I'm very encouraged that you're here. Keith, you know, you make a great point about what, about Halloween Town and, you know, is it getting to a point where we can even think about managing, uh, what's here? And I think we're doing exceptionally well with managing what is going on. I mean, exceptionally with our staff. And we heard Crystal's report and Crystal's just kind of like, you know, you, you listen to that and you figure, wow. I mean, we're way understaffed for what we're trying to do. And so, you know, I see it as that. But yeah, there's, there's some things I, I thought about. I was coming back from, um, registering for my winter employment and I was going through the city of Sandy on Saturday. And what I saw was the commercial area in Sandy, street runs through it, right? Guess what I, what, what, what I saw around two o'clock or so, I've never seen so many people. They, they had their kids out and their kids were trick or treating the commercial businesses. And it was, had to be organized by a chamber or by someone. And, um, I have, it, it blocked traffic, of, of course. It took, you know, fifteen minutes to get through Sandy because of that. But their spirit there as well. And which brings to mind, Keith, again, what you were saying about if it's getting, is it getting too big? Well, we're one of the only cities that, well, in a, in a state, but we've got such an advantage of having something going in the month of October. There's, I mean, there's a lot of summer festivals around, but St. Helens has the, has the edge, the cutting edge on the month of October. There's a lot of festivals and around, uh, Christmas time, obviously, and holiday season, that kind of thing. But October, we've got a great advantage of that. What's lacking is our riverfront development. Our riverfront development will solve that with the hotels, with the commercial, uh, outlets and livable areas. It will bring this place alive, I believe. And not only that, it will really jumpstart our economy. So, I think that's one of the things that is the ace in the hole for this place is the development of that area. So, I, I see that as, as, as key. There's a lot of other things that, that are there, but, um, one of the things I noticed was the tourist boats going by. Uh, two tourist boats that I hadn't seen before, um, one from Canada, um, and then the, the River Queen kind of things did a, did a swing by in here because they heard there was a Halloween Town going on. That's, that's great news. Tourists are going to be itchy to tie up to a dockage somewhere and get here and visit it. At least we're, at least we're mentioned, I'm sure, certain on that. So, I think that's the good news and we have to articulate on how we get there though. Sad day today. A good day, but a, a, a sad day. Well, you know, we lost a Parks Commission, uh, member. He, he perished, uh, several days ago and his funeral is today. So, um, Phil Roddy was, uh, a person who has given to communities pretty much all his life. A public servant and a, a very, very renowned person. He's the one, who is, he's the Lions Club member who came to our Parks Commission. I think he came to one of our council meetings and said, "Do you want a thousand, do you want a, a thousand dollars' worth of trees?" Well, the Lions Club is, is going to do that because it's their fifty year anniversary or that, no, their hundred year anniversary. And, um, he, he made a, uh, it was his kind of idea for him in the Lions Club to give the city of St. Helens a thousand dollars' worth of trees. Just add a zero to the hundred and that's what, so that was his, that's one of the things that's, uh, that Phil has given to the city, uh, through the Lions Club. And, uh, uh, I'll remember him, uh, and I'll remember his contributions. He always came to the, um, he always came to the, uh, any of the field trips in his wheelchair. Got around on, on a, but never complained about anything. Uh, just a, a wonderful person. So Phil Roddy, uh, this is your day and, uh, celebrate his, uh, celebrate his life. That's all I have. I want to end that up with that.
Thanks, Doug. Well, before I get to the, the department reports, I'm going to go to Dave. David, would you like to come up? And that mic, I don't know if it's on actually. Can you tap it? Nope.
Hey, Dave. Got an idea. Got a vacant seat.
Yeah? You want to sit up here with us?
Get up here as a, as a, as a junior council member.
For the record, go ahead and state your name and your department.
I'm David and I'm with the student council. So, uh, I believe the, uh, dance that we had just held, uh, went pretty smooth. There was a couple bumps that we, uh, ran through, which would be the, uh, the timing of the dance. I think we should have shortened it a bit and, uh, maybe had more, like a better selection of song. So, other than that, I think it went pretty well. A lot of people had fun. I don't know exactly how much money we've made yet, but I do know that that's being, uh, dealt with. There was a last meeting that we had, we were talking about a couple of other different things such as, it was. I'm trying to remember what you brought up. It was the.
Elf on a Shelf?
No, they're, they'll be meeting again Monday because they're making their winter plans. The youth council typically does a lot of activities over November and December. Um, community givebacks, food drives, volunteering at the senior center, and they do sell their reflectors. So they're going to meet again, um, this coming Monday and, um, do their plan for the next three months, strategizing that. This is David's first year in youth council, so he's getting the lay of the land. This is his first youth dance. But he jumped in and grabbed onto it with both hands and says, "We can do this." So we really appreciate coming in and not being timid and shy and not being afraid to volunteer. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and I, I, I did make it up to your dance a little bit late because I was at the Wyndham Mirror Masquerade Ball, but, uh, um, I guess I missed a lot of people, so you, you probably are right. Maybe shorten up the length of time.
Yeah, a lot of people left like right about the end, like about an hour earlier.
I guess I just missed you guys as I was showing up, according to Councilor Locke and, um, Carlson. So, yeah, it was, uh, it was neat to see a bunch of kids up there having some good, clean fun. And you had some great costumes. I don't know, I don't know if you were still there. I imagine you were.
I was.
There's, uh, a lot of good costumes up there.
I think the dinosaur was, that was pretty solid.
I heard, I missed the dance. I heard it was pretty, pretty tight.
It, it was fun.
I, I would. Yeah.
Yes.
I wanted to just get the council's feedback, just since David's here. Um, maybe the youth council could put together one of their meetings about what they think of Halloween Town, what it means to young people and where they think we're right on and where they think we're missing.
Yeah.
And bring that report back next time about what their feedback is about Halloween Town from just an objective standpoint from our youth. You know, just dedicate a meeting to that. It's like what's right and what's wrong. It'd be nice to get that report back. And maybe that's the role of the youth council position here is that you guys could have those discussions and whether it's come back once a month or every other month and let us know, here's our homework and you guys work on it and bring it back.
Yeah.
We need, we need to know what our kids are thinking.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to know that. That's one of the most important things that a community of our size has challenges for. And I think that, you know, it's so overlooked and the whole idea of having a youth council is specifically that. So you've got, it sounds like you've got a full agenda.
Yeah.
From what I heard. And it sounds like, uh, and you've got two really very exceptional leaders there leading you along the way. So, well, expect some good reports.
Yeah. One of the other things we were talking about was, uh, this December, trying to get some more council members in the council. We were going to have like a get together kind of thing. We're going to work on that. Think that might work well too.
Yeah. If you need a guest to show up, I, I'll offer my services.
You mean more adult, uh, you, city council members?
Grow their group.
Know their group.
They'd like, they'd like to be, they'd like to be twenty strong as opposed to ten strong.
I get it.
Yeah, he's liking that seat there and he's getting ready to turn eighteen. He's thinking he's going to expand our group.
It could happen.
How old are you?
I'm sixteen.
Okay. Junior?
Yep.
Yep. Nice. Well, we welcome you and, uh, I, I hope to see you guys here more often. I think we talked about you guys reporting at least once a month. That'd be all right with you guys.
Yeah.
Send it, send it back to your youth council and that we definitely support you. And I think that's an awesome idea of talking about Halloween Town and just.
Yeah, him and, him and Kaylee probably are going to share the role whoever is able to come, but we ran till late. I didn't go home and get her. So, and that's why we have a backup, so there's always somebody's going to be here.
Yeah. You did a fine job.
Thank you.
Good on you.
Yep. Okay, so now I go to the other departments. Anything else?
Uh, nothing I can think of.
Okay. All right, how about Sue?
Nothing more tonight. Thank you.
Yep. Neil?
I'd just like to give some kudos out to Tina. Uh, I heard some criticism today and I, somebody that works with her throughout the month of October with their crew. That lady puts in countless hours.
Yep.
She's here day and night in October. If she was getting paid by the hour, she wouldn't even be making minimum wage.
Yes.
And I think the success of Halloween Town, um, proves what she's doing. That's all I got.
She has brought it a long way. Margaret?
I don't have anything else to add.
Matt?
I gotta be the one that has one thing to talk about. Sorry. Um, one of your council goals this year was to, um, do web cameras, live feed cameras. Uh, it was a discussion that we started and we brought in, um, a third party business that does this for a living, gave a presentation. I was expecting to get a final kind of quote to bring back to you. Um, after reaching out a few times, he finally emailed me and, uh, said that he was not interested with working with the city. Didn't, I think, align with as many meetings as he expected and how many times he would have to come back and he's used to a business type of situation. So, um, but after talking, um, with the county about their stuff, um, with Center Logic and Max and Sean and a lot of the research I, I've kind of done on this subject, um, I wanted to approach the council to see if they were comfortable with trying this on our own, to see if it is possible. Cost wise financially, um, it would be probably in the range of three to seven hundred dollars to try it out. That would be purchasing the camera and the wiring, uh, and then working with Max and Sean, Center Logic, um, Lewis Audio for the wiring and then, um, our web provider, web for the website to actually get the feed on there, um, for the IP cameras. So I just wanted to approach the council to see if you are comfortable with that, if you would rather wait and look for a professional company to come in and do the quote and go through the process again. That's perfectly fine with me. I just wanted to give you the option of how you wanted to move forward, uh, with what you wanted to do.
I think that our IT guys should be able to do that and, but I would maybe spend more money than that and get a better camera or cameras, whatever you want to do.
The, the two cameras that I've kind of been going back and forth, one are about three, two fifty and three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, they're cameras that are used for kind of watching nature outside your, outside a business or a house twenty-four hours a day and you typing the IP address and, um, it does night and day. Um, but I'd be happy to, to definitely obviously work with Max and Sean to figure out what camera we think is best. And I do, would not expect it to be more than five hundred dollars at the very most.
Yeah, you can probably, but yeah, we want to get one with good resolution that, that goes the distance and whatnot.
Correct.
Because that's, that's the biggest thing. So, I, I haven't checked for a while. I'll do some, some looking and.
Yeah, and also I can send you some information on the two cameras that I've, have looked at and you can, you can look at that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other thoughts or?
No.
Are you okay with maybe moving forward individually and seeing what we can do?
And it's fairly cheap to, to see the concept, so I'm okay.
It's a, it's a low risk for, and even if you, even if we weren't successful, we would still have the equipment. It's a, it's a low risk for, and even if you, even if we weren't successful, we would still have the equipment ready and would just have to hire the company to come in and set it up if we weren't successful in any way, so. Like I said, I don't anticipate from what I've, what I've learned over the past few months in research that I've done, that it would be very difficult. Um, but I won't know until I actually do it.
Yeah, it's not that difficult.
Correct. So council's okay with me moving forward with Center Logic?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I had?
Lisa?
I do have one thing. I missed a recommendation. The Parks Commission recommended reappointing a Lisa Mann for an additional four-year term. So we just need a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second to appoint Lisa Mann. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Opposed? Hearing none?
My reason?
Yeah.
No, they've, they didn't send out any applications and we've all agreed quite some time ago that when a vacancy appears on a commission, that we send out, that we make public notice for applications to come in. Now, there was a.
There was, there was applications sent out and they got like, how many Lisa?
One was received. A press release was sent October tenth, received one application.
And then who, then who was it who, um, overlooked that? I didn't see it. But that's why I voted no. Because I didn't see the other application.
Did the recommendation, who did the recommendation come from?
Parks Commission.
The commission voted on it?
No.
Let me see. No?
No, what, uh, according to the, uh, according to the, uh, records and I sat there, they said, okay, uh, there's a vacancy. Is any, will any of you in this room like to fill that vacancy? Lisa said, yeah, I would. And so that's how that, if that's how that happened, I don't, I, I don't think that's appropriate. I think it's, it, it goes against our policy.
So was there a motion made in the last Parks Commission meeting for a reappointed?
No.
That, that does need to happen. So maybe it was unclear getting to Kathy.
And they need to make a recommendation.
Okay. Do you want to take this back to the next or, well?
I most certainly will, and along with, along with the new applicant, whoever it was.
It looks like there's two now that I look.
Yeah.
I'll take the two applicants then to, we'll get that, to put that on our agenda.
I know, uh, Sherry received. Sherry, Sherry received an email from Howard, uh, asking if they should come to the, be invited to the next Park Commission meeting to be interviewed, the people that applied. So Doug's probably right, probably should wait until all that happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'd move that way, uh, resend that last motion and, and vote then.
Agreed.
Okay.
Motion's been made in second to resend the motion of appointing Lisa Mann, um, until we get further clarification from the Parks Commission. All in.
Yeah, just a matter's policy. I mean, you know, so if we got a policy, we got it, we should stick with it and, and make it fair.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
No problem. No, I'm glad you brought it up because you're the, you're in charge of Parks Commission, so you've got a good catch here.
Thank you.
Um, yes. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? Okay, it's unanimous. Anything else Lisa? Okay. John?
Okay, I thought I, I might share like, uh, that last week I was invited to sit on a panel at the Columbia County Economic Team, which is a pretty good sized group of, uh, people interested in economic development in the county, both public and private. And the, uh, you know, I was all prepared to talk about the waterfront and our mixed use development and our urban renewal plan and things going on in the central waterfront and, um, the White Paper site is an industrial site in our city's, uh.
In Halloween Town.
The city's, uh, you know, all, moving towards this industrial park notion that would serve the Omic project and do all this.
Big stuff, yeah.
Real economic development. And it is kind of, it's kind of a moment where you, wow, tourism now is, is, is reached that threshold of economic development. It wasn't too many years ago that, you know, tourism activities were, weren't considered real economic development.
There are, people wouldn't even talk about.
Yeah, it was all service jobs and it's seasonal and it's, you know, um, there's, but as we went through the panel, um, and I was the third of four, um, you know, there was nothing left to talk about, about Halloween because it had already been talked about from outside the, so.
That's awesome.
Kind of a, uh, you know, it's nice when you don't have to advocate, uh, your own programs there, so. Um, but part of that and Counselor Morton's talking about the, the passerby's with the tourist boats that wanting to come by and make stops. And that's something that's been around for a while is these tourist ships want to have, um, uh, good experience for their passengers, good ports of call, and you look what Astoria's managed to do by attracting these, these big cruise lines and it literally just overruns their, um, communities at the times they're in port. They're, they rent every school bus in the jurisdiction. They're moving people all the way to Cannon Beach in circles and it's just, you can't hardly walk downtown, but I'm not thinking that we want to get quite that far into it. But, uh, right now we're pretty limited because we have very limited commercial space and contractually we're limited from the Marine Board. Structurally the docks are limited in, in capacity. And we've had the spirit, Portland spirit with the Stern Wheeler down for maritime and low water conditions and kind of made some judgment calls about whether they should be here or not. Um, just last week we had the American Spirit, which was upriver cruising and the train bridge was stuck down and they had a boatload of people that they wanted, they felt like they were going to be stuck overnight. So we made some calls, got some insurance and, um, made a special arrangement. They pulled up to the dock and as they do at the, the, uh, you know, the bridge opened up and they made the call and kept going. But, um, but it just kind of, they were excited about stopping and, uh, and busting them out. So I think that as part of our economic development strategy, the marine, marina approach, both in those, you know, finding ways around those restrictions, uh, whether it's structural upgrades to the docks, whether it's contractual relief, because it is part of economic development, it's part of our economic development strategy.
Could we, could we do, um, get the shoestring players and do like a Shanghai experience where we Shanghai them onto the boat somewhere, bring them here. We need, we need volunteers for Halloween Town, so we'll work them. We'll give them the whole Shanghai experience for Halloween Town. I like where you're going with this, John. It's a great idea you have.
Pay big money for that. So, so lastly, I wanted to get, uh, council, council concern, concurrence on, uh, the League of Oregon Cities has eight policy committees. They also have advocacy committees, but, um, those eight committees are community development, energy, finance and taxation, general government, human resources, telecom, cable and broadband, transportation and water and wastewater. And I, I think that, um, putting our name in for, specifically for community development and/or water, wastewater would probably be a good use of, we could see some public benefit locally from being a part of that, especially with the things we have going. I had just, the applications were due yesterday. I submitted an application. I don't know if we're selected to be on the committee or not, but, um, I would propose to represent the city on those if, if so. And, uh, community developments, land use, park and rec, housing, solid and hazardous waste, air quality, economic development, and, uh.
Yeah, a lot of things.
The, the water wastewater committee deals, deals with supply and quality, conservation, safe drinking water and the Clean Water Act, so.
Which one did you apply for?
I put, uh, community development in first position and water as a, water wastewater as an alternate.
Okay. Yeah.
That's it.
Okay. Yep, uh, Counselor Morton's got another something.
I've got one, one, one item up my sleeve. You know what it is? My fellow councilman and especially my good friend Susan. This is not a lecture. This is a reminder. And a reminder is that we have evaluations that our city charter asks us to do annually. So I, this is a reminder to start your interviews with your department heads so we can get out. It's not a lecture.
So it's not a lecture, so.
I just did one our last meeting with John.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, yeah, right. So those are due on January first? Is that correct?
Uh, they're due before the end of the year.
Okay.
And, uh, Kathy or Lisa will collect those.
Okay, Steve, do you have anything you'd like to comment on? Do you want to come up and, okay. All right, well, unfortunately, we're getting ready to go into executive session, so I'm going to have to.
Kick you out.
Ask you guys, Dave?
We're going to boot you out, ain't we?
Yeah, we're going to boot you out. Like I said, if you really want to see what's going on, show up at the, uh, the one o'clock work session and then you'll, uh, see a lot more of discussion behind all the readings and ordinances and policy, yes.
Uh, there's.
Dave, executive session means you got to be twenty-one and over.
Yeah.
Uh, so I had two things to say before I go.
Okay.
Uh, one being, uh, it was great coming. I had, I, uh, learned a couple things. It was fun. And, uh, I also wanted to bring up, uh, ask you, when are the meetings to be here?
First and third Wednesday of every month, except for July and August. We take the first one off of those traditionally.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for coming.
Whoa.
Yeah, there's a big step there.
Chip, we had Chevy Chase in here do that one time.
Okay, the time is seven forty-one PM and our next agenda item is executive session. Can I get a motion to move into executive session, ORS one nine two point six six zero two E, real property transaction?
So moved.
Oh, you weren't done?
No, I'm done. I'm waiting for a second. Okay, Counselor Locke moved and Counselor Khan has second to go into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you move it?
Yes, he did.
Okay, I didn't.
Yes. Motion passed. Representatives, uh, the news media staff and other persons.